It seems like you've got payment plans in place, but also...
Yes, but if you ask this, there's two sections. So, the first section is pretty straightforward there. But I guess my question concerns... Is that in number of these, their payment plans do not cover their current taxes.
Right.
In this issue, they would put it off. So, certainly I can start with getting a little tougher. Better explain tax, so as to be there. Requesting them to pay their payment amounts. At least they should be equal to what their current taxes do allow, at least.
Right.
Not any more, so I think that I will...
So, what are your thoughts on that? Just in reading it, it seems like you have people in pretty good situations with plans, but they're following you.
Well, the payment amounts, just looking back at it, don't equal, like the first one, that payment amount does not equal last year's taxes. They make all their payments on time every month.
So, what do you propose?
Well, I guess I want to start out, you know, consulting with them and ask them, what are their chances of bringing up the monthly payment? And that's, I guess that would be the first step.
What would you like for a time period on that?
Sixty days.
So, through the end of June?
Yes.
Do you have a little line, sir?
Yeah.
Are there any in the second group that are more challenging?
Yeah, the second group, so if we want to start with that, with the first one. That's 107. So, I've been in contact with the, that's an industrial home in the park. And I've been in contact with the park bookkeeper treasurer. As you can see, my notes there is the condition of the property. They're behind and I've had no communication, can't get any communication from them. They're not responding to anything.
Is that the one that's behind Park Run as well?
Yes, yes, this is, yes. So, I guess some, some of them got a, what do we do? It's a mobile home in a park, so what kind of appetite do we have for that?
But you've been in touch with the treasurer?
Yes, yes.
Maybe if they work collaboratively, that's what we tried to do, basically.
Yep, yep. I don't know really, do you want to have some input on this, Jim?
First of all, I'm not sure who's behind the park rent. I don't think they have, I think he does. They lost their membership, so they made it go to another price of rent. And I think it's an automatic withdrawal, so I think that's a whack. What is the amount, 27?
That's the total amount.
And you've got no response? It's a deal, if you want me to look into it, I'll try to get a response. And if you want, come and take a look now.
Well, we're looking at through the end of June now, so it's really more working collaboratively with your group.
Okay, so let me put out my agenda and I'll talk about it with the board. Is that all right?
Sure. Yeah, I...
You don't want...
Okay, so the next one on 150 Marson Hill. They committed to payment plans that they, they've struggled to keep up with. And they're going to end up falling further for it. I mean, fair amount of communication. They do need, they set up payment dates, I can come in this day. I barely give email, it's going to be late. So, I guess again, I'm kind of looking for some, how tough can we be? This is, this is an industrial home, but it's on some pay, so that's a little more.
No mortgage?
No.
Have you talked with them yet?
No, no, nothing has come in here.
Could we bring her into it and, because of the after effects if we, we do forward? To see if with her or something that can be done. Maybe put that on a shorter timeframe?
Yeah, and I guess my initial thought on that is if we get Ed involved, are we just moving one money from one pocket to the other?
It's just eventual, it's just a question of why.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's like we take it out of her's to pay up to that, but we can, we can explore that.
Just maybe just a conversation?
Yep.
We know the result of the mortgage.
Well, that's just it, I guess, you know. How hard, I'm willing to, what we've got to do, I just, I guess I don't want to.
Well, we'd like to be able to keep people in their homes for sure.
Yep, yep. Okay, so we'll, I'll consult with Ed about that. The good news is that the next one, 64, he's paid up. He came in and paid everything. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of money there, but he, he's got it.
With all the bonds of us?
Yes. So, since writing this up last week, the next one, 31, they did commit and make a payment. I finally was able to get ahold of them through the management company, that's another industrial home in the park. They came in and gave me $500 and committed to $300 a month. So, I think at this point, I've got contact, finding them, that would be on that, I think we could, you know, move on patient and then see, see how that goes.
So, you'll let that run through the year?
I would say yes. Okay, so the last one, 422 Old Brook. This is just not a good situation. We, the co-re少 officer has had probably at least three complaints that I know of on the condition of this property. One in fact on what day was it? They can't afford the property, it's, it's very apparent that that's the situation is. So, I, I guess I've got a lot to do with it. There used to be, you know, I, there used to be some view of the property, what's going to cost to clean it up? Because it's not good. But on the other hand, we do have a lot of, we have cousins from neighbors on this property. I think they have valid concerns.
Well, there are remedies, we could help, we've done it before with cleanup. In terms of providing a dumpster, if they're willing to take advantage of it.
We can explore that.
We have done that before, Josh has worked with us on that. But we need participation.
No, Josh has had issues with the resident not wanting to bring, recycle, they were going to let him bring all the garbage, like two loads, and then he had just, neither one to do it. And now the husband is not in the picture right now for the next two years.
Well, she initially, we'd started talking here a month or two ago, she initially was, you know, going to start with the $400 on the payment. But that fell apart there when they polished it off, and she should get that back on. So, I, you know, I guess it's a question of how long this is going on.
All right, who wants to add? I think we should just prolong what's going to happen, we just think it's inevitable where this is going to go. All right, ready, Jimmy?
Yeah, some of that, yeah. And talking with Ray, class, can you see the nature there? The end of $400 is here, but I, and I'm just not confident that that's, that's the case, given what's going on. You know, looking at oversight team now, into the town. And maybe you've got to have some, I guess, respect and concerns for the neighbors that are digging your ticket.
That's what my problem is mainly, that the abuse that's come along with that. I mean, I would mind working with someone, but this seems to me that we're not going to get any feedback on the other end. And I respect for the neighbors and the people, and I'm strong about that. I mean, I think we could try it, a little bit of our part, I'll try it. I think they need to show some on the other end, get some, pick up some garbage and, and you recycle help too, but... I don't know, it's only getting worse, and I, and I get costs all the time. It's pretty bad. I don't know the neighbors that complain, so I'm going to stay for this. Do you have it in the neighbor room?
I don't know, yeah, I called years ago.
Was there another one that is a problem to you maybe, or that's the one?
Let's circle back on that, and maybe reach out to Ed again and talk with Cordell and, and figure out a path forward.
Yes, maybe if Chris has some time, maybe he and I go out there and, you know, cleaning it up, code enforcement, and then trying to, you know, figure out what the long-term play is financially, is that viable?
So, figure a couple of these and put that together?
Yeah, I'll talk to Chris tomorrow, we'll figure out a time sometime next week or so, maybe. And I, I call him, I guess, try to make a point, I'll just show up.
And show up in the respect.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, you know, as I did have a conversation until last week, I kind of cautioned her that the code enforcement officer wanted to challenge her at some point, because we've gotten some concerns about the property. Do you want to step out of our weeds, but I also want to prepper that we've got some, we've got some issues.
All right, do you want to participate in that?
I would love to.
All right, you got our...
I would love to.
You can go up, Steve.
I can, yes.
Okay. So, I think we've gone through the ones we need to go through, I guess we're going to hold off on these for the most due to right now. So, the ones that are, the ones, just to review this, the ones that we need to question are the last one.
The other one you're going to work with Jim on, or Jim's going to take a look at that one?
Okay.
107.
I'm going to try to work 107, then I'm going to assist you with, hold that, right?
Okay. So, just a little bit of the other one. So, I did waivers that didn't be signed, shall I leave those, we need them signed? Didn't sign later tonight?
Yeah.
No, they're not the back.
Yeah, we've seen them.
Okay, okay, I, yeah, I think you're standing up.
I didn't even bring it.
Oh my God, this is a stamp night.
It is. I'm going home to get it.
All right, thank you.
All right, so, I guess, just one more item, I forget to agenda the last year, and I guess why don't we have a discussion about EMD? So, you guys will be paying us off, and I know why. And I, I guess, in some aspects, we need to probably keep this department more, which I've had.
So, you're talking emergency management?
Yes. I guess, I've talked to one resident that's interested in becoming a hall. And he seems like he's, you know, he's more involved in that type of work and business than we are.
So, you want to just pursue that?
Well, yeah, I guess I just, what, is there any goals, recommendations, direction you want us to head in? Try and form, and try and improve this, I'll give it a go. So, that's, we're doing a little bit more than we have.
Why don't we review what is being done, because I think it's one of those that much people are put in a position, you kind of forget about it, or I kind of forget about it. And I think it would be helpful for Mark and Jim anyway, or Mark probably more, where they have been on the police force and fire, and...
The EOC is kind of dismantled. So, there is, there's nothing there, I don't know, that's something to incorporate with. Either what will be the vacant fire station or the new fire station.
Well, we had talked about, in the room, and the new fire station, as a possibility of attracting grants. So, maybe before you come back to the top of there, determine whether there's an opportunity while we're in the design phase. Not the design phase, but the drawing, you know, construction drawing phase, determine if there's an opportunity. Just like, as I've discussed by the committee, and it was discussed during the course of the project.
Okay.
But that's for the new station, not, not talking about.
Okay. All right.
You want to come back in a month, two weeks?
Let's say one. And I will, I need to just work the eyes of this thing, just not need to make any questions.
All right, you're all set?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody, appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll be sure to adjust it if you want. Hey, everybody, welcome to the board meeting, Alisa. A few weeks ago, you, you brought to the board both the bridges and you wanted some questions answered, so and I wanted to, to look into that, and I did have several meetings with Joe over there. Lisa, I think personally, I think we're coming a long way, it's going in the right direction. I know we've got a long way to go, but you, you've got to remember, this has been a problem in the town of Swansea for a lot of years, that nothing's been done. You know, you know, we allowed it for too long, and we created a monster, and, and I think now we're attacking it at a good speed. He does have it on his control of every week somebody spending time there, you must notice that there is guys there. But his argument was that we are shot handed now on the police force, and he said, Jimmy, I just can't dedicate someone right now. We do have a good outlook on what's the future of strengthening the police department, so we might be able to spend some more time out there and address it. But I've noticed a lot of the locals now are slowing down, we, he, he does answer all your, when you send pitches, I follow up on that, you send a lot of pitches to different companies, and he, I can't even get on the phone, he's already on the phone with them, calling them, he, he followed up on the two that were over there, it was Matt. And then BDM, Arlington Paving, he did call them the next day.
And I have not seen them since.
You haven't seen them?
I have not seen them.
And I, and I personally talked to the owner too, because he was a little defensive over it and squawking about that other people, I says, yeah, we've got to stop somewhere. And you know, I think once people are realizing that we're, we're pressing on it, it's going to slow down even more. But I think Lisa on this, I have to say, this is going to take us some time to, to really conquer it. I mean, I went over it tonight, and it was a guy right in front of me with a tone of trailer. And I was, they had a mower and everything on it, it's just, it's going to be a big thing to tackle. But I really feel positive of where we've came in the past year, when we started addressing this, six months ago? More than that.
Cameras.
Cameras, and I think we've came a long way considering where we started. You know, if we weigh up where we started and where we are now, I think we're going in the right direction, you know, so... You know, it's, it's a difficult thing about the, the overweight thing, and I think he would probably answer that better than I would, because he is the chief of police, and I'd rather you talk to him personally and ask him about the ticketing on the overweight things. I think it's smarter for him to answer that question than me being in the middle of that.
So, I've spoken with an officer from the DOT.
From where?
The, with the, one of the DOT officers, Officer Phillips.
Yeah.
They're the ones that have the scales, and they, they're the ones who can give tickets for overweight. He said they're more than happy to monitor that bridge, they're more than happy to sit down there. He has reached out to the chief, and he's looking for some direction from the chief as to which vehicles he wants them to concentrate on. Does he want them to concentrate on the moms with the big Suburbans going to soccer practice? Or do they want them to concentrate on the trucks and the commercial and the trailers? And the last time I spoke with him, he has not heard back from the chief. But the DOT is more than willing to sit there entering their scales.
And the DOT contacted him, they wait for an answer?
They're waiting for an answer from the chief.
I'll follow up on that.
Thank you.
I'll find out what's going on. When did you have this conversation with DOT?
About a month ago.
Phillips, did you hear? Yeah, it's Cooper Phillips, he worked for State Police, but we concentrate on commercial vehicles. We're not trying to pick up the scales, so if they're, they're not on bypass, but we have scales, so... Interesting, so I'll follow up on that, please, sir.
Thank you.
But thank you for your concern, and you know, you're making an impact on, I know you're the squeaky wheel with this, and...
I'll keep sending pictures.
Very good, very good, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Mr. Bill, fire station, the Hampshire Municipal Bond Act, thanks for all the information you provided. In the interest of two board members here who haven't been through a bond rule, I outlined some of the general concepts on the first page. In your packet, bond basics. I think it's back about 57 or somewhere, 842?
Close.
It's a big pack.
Isn't that a little scary, you're...
67. There are just three pages that matter. And the first is sort of broad concepts, the second page deals with where we are with all bonding needs for the town for the next five years or so. And the third goes down into the weeds, you can get as deep into the weeds as you want to. On the first page, bond basics, there's been a whole series of debates as to whether we reserve for funds or whether we bond. And over the years, the town has sort of migrated to a policy that we bond for large-ticket, long-lived assets. Regrettably, we have six of them we're staring at right now, that were five or six years, drag out a beat. Three fire trucks, Town Hall, DPW, and missing one. Oh, a lease for self-contained, breathing half-rotors, which is minor. So, when you save the reserves, two factors come into play. One, typically, you penalize the people in the near term for the benefit of the people in the long term. Secondly, and lately, you are saving at a rate of about 2%. And inflation is considerably greater. So, each year, your savings diminish. So, if you bond in most bond markets, where bond rates are lower than inflation, you're in effect in what's called negative interest, and it works to your favor. That doesn't mean you should be crazy and go out and borrow everything. But that's sort of the dynamics of what's happening. There's also an accounting concept called matching, where you're trying to match revenues to expenses over a given period. Well, financing a long-term asset is much the same thing. You try and match the capital cost of that asset over the period of its useful life. In the, in the immediate case of a fire station, given Swansea's history, we're probably looking at a 100-year asset, but certainly a 30-year asset.
Took us almost five or 10 to get here, and it's not built yet.
It's been a haul, eight years. But who's counting? The, the key decision that you have to look at this evening is the term of the bonds. And I, the bond bank ran through cases, and then I took those cases and created a small model, which I'll get into. 20-year payoff, 25-year payoff, a 30-year payoff. There are two factors that you've got to look at when you decide how long you want to go with bonds. One is how those bonds are going to fit into the future capital structure of the town. And as I mentioned, we're looking at six different financings within five years. Now, some of those will probably get stretched the way they always do, but that's the schedule. And I don't think anybody would argue that we finally have to do something about Town Hall. DPW desperately needs more space, and at some point, we're going to need some fire trucks. So, they're real and they're upon us. So, whatever we do with these bonds has to fit in with those bonds, plus what bonds we have out there. Now, in analyzing this, I came across some very good news. We're, several of our bond issues, this shows how I've been doing this for too long, are, are being paid off, most notably the TIF bond, which is a big ticket item. And if receipts come in on the tax increments, this year, the way they did last year, we may get it paid off a year early, which would be grand, because all those monies would revert back to the town. And that's a much better environment than we have looked at in the past. The timing of the bond, which is why we were rushing it the last week. The bond bank has two sales each year generally, a July sale and a December early in the new calendar year. The July sale is the sale that we're going after, because we intend to be very close to full out on the fire station by the time the bonds are sold, and will be full out by the time they settle and we get our money. And we should have the money drawn down by year end. So, timing is one thing, the next thing is if you go long, it's going to cost you money. The longer you go on the bonds, from 20 to 25 to 30, the more interest they charge as to interest rate. Also, the more interest you will pay, because your debt is outstanding five or 10 more years. So, how do you weigh these costs back and forth and get the best deal for the town? The answer lies in one, how does it fit within the debt schedule? And here, a longer bond is better, with all this other stuff that we've got to do. And two, how large what is called the spread is in interest rates between a 20-year bond, a 25-year bond, and a 30-year bond. Amazingly enough, at present, at least according to bond bank, there's only a 17-point spread, 17 basis points, a basis point is 1/100 of a percentage point. So, a little under 2/10 of 1% difference between the 20-year bond and the 30-year bond. I've been doing this for about 40 years, I don't think I've ever seen a spread that small. That said, Washington is a state of chaos. That said, Washington is a state of chaos. The financial markets, if you look heard, are in a bit of state of chaos. The benchmark ten-year treasury bond is, no, is fluctuating huge amounts each day. So yes, you've got to make your mind up for the purpose of the application. Finally got together, which should be filed this week or early next week. But key dates, you will have until July sixteenth to change your mind. That's when everything goes file. Oh, pardon me. I'm reading this wrong. The last change date is May twenty-third. So we've got to file this. I filled it out with thirty years. It can go in with thirty years and we can change it. But it'd be a heck of a lot easier on everybody if you made up your mind this evening with one caveat. We will, I guess I will, look at the bond market very closely as the data of May twenty-third comes up. And it goes widely off. You're going to hear from you very quickly. And we'll sit down and debate it again. So your main call this evening is twenty, twenty-five, or thirty?
And your recommendation based on what you said with regard to the basis points is thirty?
Yeah. It's pretty basic. The second page deals with proposed debt on the top. Fire truck, DPW, Town Hall. This is all on C I P C. Fire truck, one of them's a ladder, the breathing system, and then another fire truck. There are two engines and one ladder in there. The second half of it deals with the debt service, and that's what I was referring to earlier. If we look at the bottom, we have sort of a baseline of debt service that we have. And then we have what we would add to the burden of what the taxpayers paying. And the taxpayer pays based upon what the debt service is on the bonds. The actual debt on the bonds doesn't enter into it, other than causing the debt service. But what goes to the tax bill is principal plus interest each year. So I added in, I took the baseline, I said, here's what's scheduled, and then here's what's coming off. And it runs with a slight uptick, and I will say much lower than advertised during the deliberative process for the fire station, mainly because we aren't going to start paying on the fire station bonds until early twenty twenty-six. But it only goes up a hundred grand, which is modest. Then it's pretty level, even while taking on all these deferred items. Or at least certainly Town Hall is and DPW is. So that's the context you're working with. The third, and we can get into this as you want, but I think you should be aware of the numbers. This is down in the weeds. Up at the top, I showed the rates for a twenty-year, twenty-five, thirty-year, and the amount of the bonds, which is steady, and what the annual debt service would be under each of these. And then the amount of savings. I took the amount of savings of thirty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars in the annual debt service. And I said, okay, if we had an extra, call it thirty-eight thousand dollars each year, and we apply that to debt service on a twenty-year bond, how much could we borrow? The answer is five hundred thousand dollars, which is about a fire truck. That's how you stay level with your debt service.
It's great analysis, Steve.
It's really that simple. But I also will tell you, on the bottom three-quarters, I ran out the interest payments under the twenty, twenty-five, and thirty. And the number's pretty large when you deal with the difference between twenty and thirty. It's seven, a little over seven hundred thousand dollars over thirty years. So you say, and this gets into the time value of money. You say, well, that's great. How do I measure that right now? And the answer is to take the present value of that income stream, which is exactly what I do on the right side of it. I say, okay, if we're going to pay out this extra money over all these years, how much would I have to put in the bank right now to cover that added debt service? And the answer of twenty versus thirty years, a hundred-four percent, comes out to three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Now, that's the annual cost of the fire station in real dollars to go thirty years versus twenty years. But the other factor is if we do that, we can go out and borrow five hundred thousand more. And five hundred is greater than three hundred and sixty-seven.
Does that three sixty-seven take into account inflation, or is it based on today's value?
Two days' value. That's a bridge too far for me. A little above my pay grade.
Hypothetically, it's striking.
Actually, actually, there is a formula for it. It's based upon an internal rate per term. But this is confusing now. But I thought that you should see the big ugly number. Now, I'm strongly for thirty years. I felt we should go for longer bonds, and Mr. Brandley and I had long debates about that. But this is a case where it's large enough. The useful life is, with a hurricane, fifty years, probably. So we're in good stead there. I'm very interested in the town keeping on with this capital program. I'm very interested in Town Hall finally getting done, DPW getting done. And I'd like to have the firemen riding around in something that probably is not qualified as an antique. So that's sort of the long and short of it. I'm happy going to more detail. You do have time to change your mind. The market may change your mind, but this, it goes up and it comes down. Gosh, it pretty much, at the end of a week or so, it winds up about where it was. No guarantees.
So is that the twenty-third? Is that the firm rate, or is the rate still adjusted as we begin to July?
The rate is what it is the day the bonds are sold.
On the twenty-third. Oh, so what do we?
The bonds are, say, sold July sixteenth. It's the market that day. There's no way around that.
So either way, it's a risk, but it's calculated risk.
It's calculated risk, we can do it. Ain't no guarantees. I think frankly, the bond bank, if I was doing this deal, my last change date would be probably the first of July at the at the earliest. That's a big gap for us to cover. And it's a little unwieldy deal. It's not one bar or a bunch of Wall Street types. So, and they do a pretty good job. The fire deal with the application is, if you all agree to thirty years, either in my draft mailbox, I send it to the bond bank. They made comments on it. We work out any problems we have. I'll bring it back. And I believe there's a resolution that you resolve, that Bill signs it, and then we'll send it in. It's got to be in by the twenty-eighth of this month, which is why we've been pushing pretty hard. So you have a little time to think about it.
You prefer the resolution tonight, and then we'll just move it forward as you're doing the negotiation? So we're ready to go?
Well, the negotiation is just putting in here corrections. There's no the only decision point here is the term.
And there's no benefit for us holding off a week because if something changes and you have up until the twenty-eighth to adjust?
Yeah. So.
Any questions?
Lori? Anyone else have any questions if you could hear? Go for it. Look at that. I didn't pick up on that one. You told me about the sign.
This was on the chair, though.
Somebody look out for you, huh? All right, so is that the resolution? We have a motion.
All right, so the motion is to authorize the board chair to sign the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank application for a bond of two million five hundred thousand to partially fund the construction of the new fire station at three twenty-one North St. Highway. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
You will also have a large reform of resolution that define the element draw-up, and you'll have your bond hearings, two hearings. And I guess Lori can work that out with Renell. Renell has this down to a drill, and she's very good at it. And our last bond deal is only two years old, so, and same time. So it was August of twenty-two, or twenty-three. So it should be pretty easy from here on in. I just want to watch those rates. And I think you can bail at the end if the market goes horribly the wrong way. Although our ladder group here, he must have it.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it, sir.
Joe Russo. Welcome, Joe. See you, boy.
Nice to meet you, Joe.
Welcome, my boy. Since Steve was just talking about the fire department, would you like to start an update on that time schedule?
Sure. Essentially, the project started March very first, two thousand twenty-five. We already started to do some work on-site erosion control. All the topsoil has been stripped off and going over the plans. I met with Chad Brandon from Fieldstone out there to discuss a couple of issues, not issues, but items. So that is moving in the right direction. Construction manager request proposal was authorized for the architect and for Chad Brandon, as you know. We're on the way there. The bids are due on April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five. We get a general contractor on board. After we get those bids, we take a look at them, and the plan is to move on that right away. We're a general contractor. We're working with the architect and the site and Chad Brandon to come up with a finalized plan and move forward. There's going to be a couple of issues pending permitting, and one of them hopefully isn't going to cause a delays for FHA because the location of the fire department, they have to give approval.
FHA or FAA?
I'm sorry, FAA, FAA for the airport. They have to give a stamp of approval for it, and we're hoping that doesn't cause a delay.
There shouldn't be any diluxel issues with that at all.
No, shouldn't be. Just a matter of getting them to approve, so.
I think Chad's also done that calculation.
Yeah, he told me last. He was waiting to hear back. He didn't have a timeline on that. We can follow up with him. Test pits already done on the property, the soils. Next week, insulated test bores for the building to take place on Tuesday. They're scheduled to go, so. And then the next, it'll be finalizing the site plan and the the building and work, additional work can start as soon as that site plan is finalized and all the approvals are in place. So it could be as early as the mid-May to start working on it. Estimate two to three weeks of site prep and have the foundation in place.
When is it going to go planning board?
I'd have to check back on that one.
The second meeting in May.
I don't have that listed in here, and that is, that is kind of a courtesy. The municipalities exempt, so it's kind of a courtesy that we're going before the planning board. But I haven't got that final date. You said second move of May?
Uh, second meeting.
Second meeting in May.
That would be also, just in case you missed anything by going further. How was it helpful to go in front of that?
It just showing consistency with, well, all the other projects are required to do. Like I said, we're a municipality, so we don't have to, but in good practice to follow up. Was it being done with other projects from private property owners?
Business is open any day.
Exactly. So yeah, the plan is that DPW will do a good portion of the site. We'll work that out with the general contractors assigned. It's a pretty straightforward site due to the land and the material that is there. And then the, I know the goal of the board is to have the fire trucks out of Town Hall by November. And I think that's a realistic goal unless we run into some unforeseen delay.
Those are boring, it's going back, though.
Yeah.
The materials are a bit old.
Yeah. Like I said, I think from the time you start subgrade, within three weeks, you're going to have a foundation in place. It's pretty straightforward.
So we'll discuss that well thing when that comes up, huh? That won't just be?
No, I've already.
The contractor just?
No.
And have them without us talking about it, right?
I've done some work on that already. I've asked Chad and the architect Katie. If there's any reason why the well can't stay. And then next step is to have a test to see if it even is before, put the concrete for a horse, so to speak. Figure we can have a flow test and see what's there for water, see if it is worth saving. But I asked, before I go spend a couple thousand dollars on the test, I asked them if that is feasible before we do now. The next step would be to test the well to see if it.
When you say test, you're going to test the water?
Flow test.
The flow, the static, all this and everything?
Yeah. And I haven't done, I haven't received a quote, but I've been told anywhere from fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars to do all those tests. But there's no sense doing those until we hear back from the architect.
Because we're not even sure if there's a pump in any of them.
No.
But I would imagine there is because you hit the wires. The wires connected to something.
Yeah, and there was water in the well, so I'm sure there is. I don't know what there is for water quality. If there, most people are further down, they're going to be, the water, but I'm not sure of any of the wells in the area. But if the well is fine, has good waters, and we can keep it, you might as well keep it. You could use it for things like for washing fire trucks, watering grasses, to be supplemental to the, to the water connection. I haven't heard back. I inquire if both Katie, the architect, and Chad, site design, say that it can stay there on the land and have it tested.
Yeah, it would be pretty surprising to me if they tell us that we have to, unless it's sitting on a, if it's flat or a bit of them is going to land, you know. Yeah, it would be pretty surprising if they tell us that we have to, unless it's sitting on a, if it's flat, or a bit of them is gonna land, you know? Would we do vary? Could.
Either way, if it, whether it stays or goes, it's a potential issue for depending on where the building's going to be. It's just gonna come up with a plan, how, how to keep it, et cetera, to be varied or not, come up with a plan with that.
Yeah.
And then, like I said, make sure that it is functioning, has decent water, even worth saving, otherwise you fill it, you fill it, it's staying.
I really am, do you concern with the value, it could have a lot of iron, it could have sulfuric, but we're willing to, for, it wouldn't matter, it would be more about the flow, how much it makes.
Exactly.
Volume of that would be more, if it's only making a gallon, then.
Exactly, yeah. So I can fill it with test, I forgot, fill it with sand, I forgot the material you put on the top of it.
It's a clear palette that feels sort of like it's clear elements in ways, just feels like some air.
Any other questions on the fire station?
Foundation, is that something that we could do? To bid ourselves, would it be a part of the general contractors?
It would be a part of the general contractor.
But they'd be prepared to move forward on it, as quickly as you're talking?
Yeah, I've talked to a couple of people that are interested in bidding it, and like I said, I think that realistic timeframe is within three weeks of, of that end.
Of the plan, of moving forward with the actual site construction?
And, um, yeah, I don't even, even if we had a site plan, I think it'd be difficult to get going before that April twenty-eighth date, so. Um, I think as soon as we get the general contractor assigned, we start moving forward on it.
Can you, so, isn't that a change of plans, the, the foundation from what we originated?
Not yet.
Standing on a slab?
No, it's a four foot wall and slab, and I think, um, I've heard from a couple contractors that are interested in it. There's money to be saved, which we believe there is in the design. Two of the big issues that I would like to see is make a freeze span. The current conceptual plan has combs inside, which.
So would you.
You can easily make a freeze span. So that's one of the things that we're gonna look at, and then the other thing we'll look at is doing a full eight foot wall and getting the building a little bit further off the wall. It would save a little bit on lumber, but the longevity of the building being on a full eight foot wall would make sense.
And need a strength last, you know, you correct a little better strength the way it sits.
So like I said, I think there's some savings elsewhere that would make worth, so once that, like, that's the, the idea with getting the general contractor on board, working with the architect, coming up with final designs, having those type of suggestions. Yeah, next one, uh, North Winchester Street and California Street. Working with the engineers right now in DDS, uh, gonna have final approval and move forward with everything. The issue I am gonna need to deal with, uh, is being authorized to sign the notice of award for a contractor. J Evans Construction out of Fratador Lawn is the low bid. His bid came in at one million two hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars. The next bid was Mount Shada at Jafri, and I think that was one point three six million in the block from there. Underwood Construction has vetted out JM Construction, they, they meet all the requirements. If you're familiar with the FW Web Building, J Evans is the one that did the site and the paving on the, the FW Web Building here in town.
So for this, you, you just need an authorization from the board to award the project?
Yes.
And also to, uh, extend the funds from the true trust?
That's correct. Why don't you make the motion that we authorize DPW Director Russo to sign contract J Evans Construction? One point two nine 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 eight five million. And to expand it from four hundred and one thousand one hundred dollars from over, we have extended the trust on one hundred fifty out from sidewalk committee bump, looking better for Mike Gordier.
Second.
Could you explain what the balance of the funding?
The balance of the comes, comes from my SRF funds. So a couple DDS SRF funds, um, I just sort of, uh, I don't know the exact, uh, yeah, I don't know the, but it has to do with clean water. What's that?
The F is probably fine.
Yes, uh, I'm not exactly sure, uh, but there's, it's, it's all from New Hampshire DDS, or stuff that Mike Bradley worked on ahead of time.
So, so we're putting five fifty into the project?
Correct.
And these funds and the balance is coming from the state DDS?
That is correct.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome, I think it's, it's something clean water and storm water, I'm not exactly sure on the, on the, on the. Uh, with that being said, as far as sidewalk, I'll, I'll see more on that. We're gonna move, DPW is gonna move forward on extending the railroad street sidewalk for the sidewalk committee, there's been several requests. Gordier, I came to me last year, started planning on it, so the railroad street sidewalk is a pretty forward care that's out here right now. Some of that is going to be removed and replaced, but the railroad street sidewalk's gonna run all the way down to, uh, just about the intersection of Pine Street, and then it's gonna cross over and move towards Summer Street. And we're gonna work with, uh, J Evans said that he would honor the same price he bid on the sidewalk for North Winchester Street. So that sidewalk, we will do the site work and prep for it, and he will pour the concrete as, as, not part of this contract, but as part of this project over here.
So it's all concrete or?
Concrete, this is gonna be a concrete, you have to request the sidewalk committee to match the others, it's gonna be a five foot concrete sidewalk. No granite curbing down there, there'll be a similar reveal to what's already in place.
So why are they doing this project again to go over here, why they had equipment and everything here, it just makes sense.
No, we're gonna do the site work, they're just gonna pour, they're gonna form and pour the concrete. Right now, DPW, we're currently grading railroad, uh, the new grade is working out, we're a little bit behind because of the weather. We're trying to grade either rain or snow, or snow, but the goal is that as soon as we get the roads, uh, graded, and then there's some other spring stuff that needs to be taken care of. Road sweeping, catch basin cleaning, and, uh, and some other small items, the ball fields, putting all that stuff back up to them. Then we will transition over instead of working on the sidewalk. Another thing that's gonna be addressed while we're over there is Eaton Road, I'm sure if you driven Eaton Road after a rainstorm or snowstorm, there's a serious gathering of water, we're gonna try remedy that with another catch basin we think can be done, so, so that work will be started before it's gone. Next one was for an updated sewer plant, uh, as most of you know, there's a, a solar array going in. We're working on final approval right now through DDS to get that up and going. Probably break grounds sometime in early May. And then the other ongoing issue is the, not an issue, but positive thing is the, uh, the engineering study of the wastewater plant. That, that is ongoing, lots, a lot of movement with that. A pilot plan is part of that grant, a pilot plan being put in place to try a different type of chemical to correct the phosphorus issue. That's gonna be up and running real soon, we're just finalizing and getting chemicals ordered on that. So that is moving ahead well. Uh, another engineering, uh, wait for Lori to come on board for this one. Before Michael left, uh, we did a RFP for in engineering services for the Swansea Lake Dam. Swansea Lake Dam has received a couple of letters of deficiency. Uh, the engineers, we, we had about seven engineers file their qualifications and an interest in it. The next step would be to meet with all these engineers and interview them. We've worked with some of them, some of them are new, I think this is a good opportunity to see what's out there and, and, and move forward with that. That, once again, that is, there's no design in place, there's no plan at this point. It's just meeting with the engineers, selecting an engineer to come up with a design that's gonna correct the issues that the state have identified. The state, who's got to notice, the state's coming out for another inspection like they do annually, and, uh, all the other dams have been rebuilt, that's the last one remaining.
Do you anticipate that to be on the mark for next year?
Probably not, I think that would, yeah, I think we, we, there wouldn't be enough time. So next step would be selecting an engineer and a funding source for the engineer and siding and design to correct those deficiencies.
If you just keep it a back in line, we'll, we'll have our meeting at Richardson Park sometime this summer. It might, if, if we made progress, it might be an opportunity to update, uh, the people that come out for the meeting.
At Richardson.
It'll be a Swansea River residence.
Uh, the other thing I'm working on is the RFP, ready to go out for this year's paving. The roads we're looking to do this year for us to have, Prospect Street right here, which is really bad, and then West Street. West Street's gonna be a little bit complicated, West Street on the west side of Route Ten. There's currently a sidewalk there that's in poor repair, but the greater the road, there, there isn't any drainage there. There's a, basically a dry basin that fills up with water, and then the road floods. So looking to remove, we're gonna remove the concrete sidewalk, and talk with the sidewalk committee about that, and we're gonna just pave the road the same size as what's there for sidewalk, and we're gonna paint designated a certain area of the paved portion as the sidewalk in order to get that water off the road. I need to speak with the owner of the landscape supply company, I'm gonna look to get an easement, we're gonna look for a couple of ca, catch basins in, but the area's so flat there, I'm hoping to get an easement from him to discharge two catch basins into his detention pod. I waited to approach him, it was a thought mine when, when that landscape company went in, was to approach him about that, but I wanted to see if he was gonna have any flooding issues before, but it looks like that system they have in place is working pretty well, I'm sure it can handle a couple of catch basins. So it required an easement, but it was, the work would consist of, we would go in and do the drainage work, a couple of catch basins, remove the concrete sidewalk, build the road up to get a crown on it, and to get the water off, and then reclaim, the asphalt is in really bad shape. Mike Bradley and I would get numerous complaints on that each year, it's, it was slated for a little bit further out, uh, but we're able to get to it a little sooner, hopefully this year, everything falls into place with the plan. Uh, within, within two weeks, I should be able to have the RFP out on that, uh, and hoping to hear from the property owner soon about the easement on the two catch basins.
So on that sidewalk, are we gonna clearly label it with signage or striping or?
It'll be striping, and we put some type of sign up to indicate that it's a, that's a sidewalk, but I'll see what some of the other, I haven't done anything with that as far as marking, but we'll see what some of the other communities are doing. I know Keen has designated bike lanes, but I was thinking something along the lines, there'll be, there'll be a clear fog line, maybe some diagonal white or blue lines identifying it.
It's interesting, I never had been thought of that, so, so the curbing of the sidewalk won't allow the water, but now you guys, soon the surface is blow right on the edge.
If you drive over there during a rainstorm, that's why the road's so. Lot of water. And it's to save money, just in order to come in and.
Right.
Correct that and redo the sidewalk and drainage, it would be, it would be a substantial amount of money, and I think that would be the best way to go. Sidewalk doesn't get used all that much, but it does get used, and I, I think this would be a good test to see if possibly used in some other areas.
You seen it time before?
Yeah. If it, if it was a highly traveled road, I think it would, like, a asphalt burn in between, but then you run it to, cut out, it's full of water. Excuse me, but then I think you're running to the same problem.
Could you also make a note that we need to follow up in regard to the sidewalk on Old Homestead Highway that we talked to Pat, or Pat Clark, talked to us about?
Up, up on, up past the school.
Basically, sawmill down to the school. Shot, hey, there's supposed to be a sidewalk right up the house.
Yeah, it is.
The one, the one issue that we're gonna run into there is, there's gonna be some challenges with that one, I've already looked at it, and the state will will not likely, uh, allow us to create a crosswalk anywhere to switch onto the other side of the road. So we need to stay on that side. Stephon was starting to talk to some property owners, and then when the grant went somewhere else, it kind of put our hole, but the first leg of it, there's one ish, issue along the way, drainage structure that's gonna take some substantial work. I think initially the talk was to have it on the other side of the road, but I don't think that's going to be an option. And that one challenge would be that one, uh, drainage structure in the area like Elsop that you're gonna have to work on.
That's the basket, who was referring to, is the.
I think that is all I have for, uh.
Great wall.
Oh, the great wall, I had that, I'm like, listen, I forgot, yes, the great wall's going quite well, the slope is just about done, uh, they haven't been there a couple of weeks, but, uh, the very top of the slope is being constructed, and topsoil is being put on. The temperatures weren't there, they need to get grass planted sooner than later, but this, the temperatures just aren't there, we'd be wasting our time trying to get grass to grow right now. But the next step would be to get that hydroseed and get some grass going on there, and, uh, and then they'll start tackling some of the drainage up top. I think four to six weeks is probably the realistic time to have that complete.
We could put some Christmas buns on that roll over there, we did that.
And after lift that. Yeah, and they lifted the kids here out there the other day.
They did?
Okay.
When they asked, they big ask for. You're welcome.
Nice job, Joe.
Resident of West Street, side, west side of West Street, you've written a plea seeking that one.
Yeah, and like I said, we recognize all that, but what, you live in there, what are your thoughts on removing the sidewalk and adding a shared paved area?
I, I think it actually does get used a lot. That's first, I've heard of having it on, but I think if it's a little marked, it should be fine.
Yeah, I think so, I think so, and where we don't have the funds to reconstruct it, I think this is the next best option.
You won't have trees growing up in the sidewalk.
It's in pretty bad shape.
Mr. Marazov, welcome.
It's been a long, it's been a few, but it's all.
We've worked previously.
Great.
And, uh, that's, uh, that's a, it's a pleasant surprise, it's a great surprise. Good to see you again. Uh, Mark, formerly, David Herzog.
Hi, Jay.
Tom Kastner. So, uh, maintenance is why I was supposed to come in to.
Actually, uh, part of it is more educational to help fellow members.
With that, for that thought, Bill, I'm sorry, I didn't make a copy for you. But I'll make sure that, uh, I'll, I'll e, email all three of you, all everyone here, uh, copy, uh, this is more than. This is a reference to me, you won't have to put out by the assessing standards.
People are looking great and feeling, yeah, looks beautiful.
It's exciting, yeah, it's very interesting, but you can't drive.
Oh, I'm so excited to get that.
But, uh, as you're led, okay, and what, what it does, it takes, it takes you through the entire taxation process in here, I'm sure. Uh, January to December, it'll, uh, give formula of filings, uh, dates, whys, whats, how to's. It actually is pretty good. From that.
Where are you going?
Yes, well, I was, I was, I was on the assessing standard board for about seven years, and, uh, I, uh, it was originally done, uh, just before I came on, but, uh, yes, I've been involved on, on several updates and so forth in the book.
So you cut it back a little?
No, I think a fair amount. Uh, and, uh, from that, uh, so we don't have to go back, uh, heavy into, into reading, uh, just, uh, from that book, there are a couple of videos that will get me to our maintenance. And I only, I brought four. I hope, I certainly, uh, I apologize.
You cleared the room.
Yeah.
No, no.
I'm sorry, I don't know who, who's.
Is somebody, uh, Dave Marazov?
I'm, I'm Dave Marazov, I'm your contracted tenant assessor.
Okay.
And have been for, uh, several years now, and that's, that's about, uh, nine, nine years now.
Okay. I, I just didn't know who you were and.
Yeah, I try to keep a little profile. I'm the guy that, that doesn't get back to.
Wanna give him your address, Mark?
Yeah, it's on the wire. I have a card.
That's what it is. I love it, I'm just part of all my, we're gonna try my work.
I made sure the print was very small so that it deters.
But the abatement process, geez, select men, you, especially when, you know, newly, newly voted in, you get these abatement recommendations put from you. Yeah, you don't even, you really don't understand, what am I signing here? Why am I giving, you know, why am I giving this person a refund, if you will? You know, and the whole process of the abatement, it's, it's not meant to be adversarial, okay? It's, it's just, it's a part of the process. Annually, after the second tax billing comes out, which is the, the second billing being the definitive value, we bill twice a year. And May, June, the first billing, if you will, that's merely considered an estimate. We're using the prior year's tax rate, the current value. But the reason it's an estimate is because the, the state's schedule is shifted six months off from our assessing year, whereas we live from April 1st to March 31st. There's six months, and they're, they're October or two, September. And they don't collect all their information, RMS1 filings and things of that sort, which aren't due until September. So, they don't begin processing tax rates till October, November. And that's when the towns get their official tax rate for the, for that tax year. So, the second billing is considered the definitive because we're using that tax rate. And the software, thank God it's software now, and not hard cards like back in the old days, but the software actually takes into account the difference of the old tax rate, how much was paid. And when it, when we plug in the new tax rate for the second billing, it will take into account if there was an overage and underage, and it will reconcile that first amount paid versus what needs to be paid for the entire tax year. And that's why some people, when they get their second tax bill, oh, my taxes went up. We did, we did a revaluation last year. And it was, we were at, I want to say sixty-two percent plus or minus of a level of assessment, meaning the assessments had gone, were so much lower. The market had appreciated over the last five years so much, so greatly, when compared the assessment to the current sale price, that assessment was only at sixty-two percent of what the property sold for. And while we don't deal with individual, you know, everyone's level of assessment, we deal with the median, the central tendency points of all the sales. And that's what they would come up with, in Swansea's case, at sixty-two percent prior to the revaluation year. Then we go into a revaluation year, and well, because we're looking for as close to a hundred percent of the market value as we should, the values increase. And people tend to, they see that, but they don't usually, it doesn't really register until after they get that bill. And then, oh, this is my taxes went up, blah, blah, blah. And then it's their right as a taxpayer to, if they feel aggrieved, to file the abatement. Abatements is a basic form. You, you, you've likely seen them already, what the form is like to request the abatement. They have any time from the time after they receive their second bill to March 1st to file that request. If they, if they don't file in a timely manner, it's, it's considered not, not acceptable and so forth. As I was looking at this, just to give you the synopsis of abatement requests, three broad categories. And you can't just say, well, you know, my, I can't afford a penny, but I, you know, I got to, for whatever reasons. Three broad categories, physical description errors, meaning, geez, I'm listed as a two-story, and you know, my cape only has a dorm on, you know, not two full stories, things of that nature. I have two bathrooms, not three bathrooms. These are physical descriptive errors. Twenty, my, my mold is fourteen by sixty-six, not fourteen by sixty-two. Physical descriptive errors, where we would consider reviewing and recommend to the board. Damaged buildings during the tax year. Well, geez, my, my shed collapsed over the winter, these type of scenarios. Or the, if it was prior to April 1st and it was, it was damaged before April 1st, then it's, then it's legit. Our tax year runs April 1st to March 31st. April 1st is like a snapshot in time. Whatever is, whatever is how it was on April 1st is how it stays on the book for the year, provided it wasn't, it wasn't an active god, a fire, or lightning damage, which there are other remedies for that as well, in a corroded situation. And the, and the last descriptive is valuation opinion differences. And that's where taxpayers, hey, geez, there were three light cape properties on Main Drive, Swansea. And my other two neighbors were pretty, I think were fairly similar, and yet my assessment is twenty thousand dollars higher, and I don't agree with that. And that's an opinion evaluation difference. So, these are reasons, I have a reason. I can just throw something out and see if it'll stick to the law. But what that, these requests do is they kickstart the review process. And it gets the assessor out, go to the property, speak to the owner, gather information as to why. The abatement applications, there are sections where it says state supporting documentation, why. And sometimes it's, there's very little, sometimes there's none. There's a fine line, and if you're given very little, does it still have merit? We want to be fair, and the whole thing of the game is fair and equitable. And that's determined in my research and subsequent recommendations. I do tell taxpayers, hey, the two most important things that you will need to do is sign this application and put a date on it, use a title for a timely filing. If you need further subsequent, subsequent supporting documentation, write so on the, on the application, or get the application in. Protect, because that would protect your, your rights to appeal. So that, I, I review these situations and so forth. Answers to abatements. Now, if you file, you may apply no later than March 1st, or if March 1st is a Saturday, it's the subsequent day business. Or if the tax bills went out late, you have a period of sixty days to file an abatement. But answers to abatement requests, they're, they're statutorily not demanded to have a response until July 1st, okay? And it seems like a long way away, but that's the way the RSA is written. The town has until July 1st to answer. And sometimes we're still gathering information, or it's, it's a busy year, there are a lot of things going on. Or we know we're going to deny a situation, and we're waiting for them to give supportive documentation in a situation that we feel is critical, and it never comes. So, July 1st comes and goes, and they don't, they don't hear a response, then it's summarily denied. It can be considered summarily denied. I know it's, you know, there are better ways. I, I've been in a situation where July comes and I've called people, some, I've called people, let them know. I'm still working on it. I've had other situations where I know it's going to be denied because people didn't, or a corporation or company didn't supply critical information. They know it's denied. But July 1st is the RSA statutorily given date for response from the community. And I want to bring that up because with the change in personnel and so forth in the select boards, I want to make sure you understand that. The tax year is, is really, it's set up so that these abatements come in in March. And it's not like we pump them out in, you know, during the month of April historically, okay? Hey, I don't mean we drag our heels every year, but the way the tax year is structured, once the abatements, the filing time for March comes and goes, now it's March and April, and we have other duties as well, because now we, new inventory. We've got to beat the brush for all the permits and permitted building values and so forth. Update unfinished instructions to scenarios. We've got to prepare for that first billing to come out. And historically, we kind of do that, we do that process. And once, we get a little later, later in April, coming into May, and we know we can get those bills out because the, the data's been collected, we can kind of double back and then see what's the status of these abatements and give them the time that they deserve, you know? But in this situation here with April, I'm kind of proud of it. We're, we're actually, we're doing extremely well this year. I think there are a couple of dozen abatements, which after a revaluation of about thirty-eight hundred parcels, is, is very good. That's a good response, meaning that the response was better, the values are acceptable to the, within the community. But we've already addressed a dozen, say, in five, six, whatever, abatement batches before the select board. And we're well on track to finish this up in the month of April, which is unheard of. And.
Please note, it's great, we appreciate it.
And it might have to be later in the year because I can work on, you know, maybe assist another community to have evaluations for in 2025. But these abatements, on the, the second page, if you flip it over, the timeline, abatement and appeal process timeline, it just gives you that brief, you know, you file no later than March 1st, or sixty days if the bill, the bills, you know, came out after a certain date, whenever. Receive a response no later than July 1st. And in the middle of that, we're, it does say, or no municipal response indicates a denial. I mean, the, the RSA's already factored that in. But once these abatements are, I make my recommendation, and they are considered by the, by the BOS, they have, the taxpayer has a recourse if they're still not satisfied. This is what, what we call the local level. This isn't court. This is the local board of selectmen gathering the, the information, making informed decisions to grant or deny. And taxpayer receives the letter of the course of action. They have until September 1st of, of any calendar year, if they're not happy, they can file with the state board of tax and land appeals. Now, that's, it's, it's not exactly a court. It's comprised of a three-member state board. Typically, there are one or two attorneys, land attorneys, and perhaps someone from the appraisal field, assessing field. So, they're educating folks specifically for matters of valuation. And that's, they can either go to the VTLA, which is where most cases go, or they can go to Superior Court. You can't go to both, so you gotta pick and choose. We had just taken care of a matter prior to Michael's leaving that involved potential Superior Court. And then it gets, it gets a little, a little busy because our attorneys come into play and so forth. But the typical rule of action for taxpayer, once they pass your local level, is they can either go to the state board of tax and land appeals and take their appeal further, or Superior Court. There, it's, it's well explained in the manual. I'm just trying to think, it's hard to, geez, it's hard to spit out what I, what I do for years and years in a short session. And I do recommend anyone interested, when the Department of Revenue has a statute, of course. They have many ones, and they have some that are, you know, like a Monday through Thursday up at the, up in Concord, up at Triane Park Drive, there, the NHMA building. They're really good. The abatements that we're looking at, any questions with the process, first of all?
How many have you denied with us?
You know, I don't, I don't think I've denied any of them yet. But I, I do have a fair denial record, okay? Sometimes it bites me. I, I try to be objective. When I first came, at least in the town of Swansea, one of the former selectmen, he, his manager was, is it defendable? Is it defendable? Whether what my gut or, you know, even the statistics, is it, is it defendable? And I've gotten to a point in Swansea, New Hampshire, if it's, if it's not strongly defendable, then, then let me take a look at it. Litigation costs money. What's, what's the better, what's for the betterment of the, of the whole, okay? Look at the big picture.
Sure, just understanding, sorry, you, you denied, then the next option is come from Civia, right?
No, no, Jim.
Could be approved for, he recommends.
Yes. If I meant, Jim, you are the assessing body. You folks, you've, the three in this situation, the selectmen down in Swansea are the assessing body. I am, I am contracted to, to assist you. And that's why my recommendations are recommendations. I want you to be informed when you make a decision to deny a grant. I think over time, when we develop a, a rapport, and I can gain your trust through working together, that, that it's, it's, my recommendations will take on, you know, more and more and more support in your mind to where, oh, okay, this is, the, the basic looks pretty good. If you ever need further, then I, I will provide, you know? Now, it's not, it's not a situation where I'm gonna do a mini appraisal scenario like that. If it's, if it's, say it's, I don't know, say if it's a market basket, a, a large, a high-valued. a, a, a large, uh, high value property, rather than, uh, draw, you know, cross swords with, uh, another appraiser that, uh, that's come my way. You know, I, I've been in situations where I've suggested, hey, I, I have a, I have a guy that does appraisal work too. And he's a, he's a third, he's a third party. And, uh, and that's worked out well. These are situations I bring up when I feel that it is defendable and so forth. And, uh, sometimes we want to ensure that we, uh, we have the best defense. Situations like that, would you mind the assessing body? When I did my revow, I, I did a, a fairly comprehensive analysis, broken down on, uh, building types based on, uh, land neighborhoods, uh, parts of town for vacant to include site values and so forth. That's on the books. My, uh, my analysis, my analysis worksheets are in, uh, in a report that resides in, uh, in your assessing, uh, person's office. That's there, that's there to be seen, it's a public book. If people have questions, they can see that. They can't just come in here and say, well, you know, you, you told it. You base it on anything. You just slow the bus up and say, hey, take a look at our contracted assessor, uh, take a look at this report book that's in the, in the town offices and then come back and talk to me. If he missed the, if he missed the mark here or there, show me. No one's perfect here. But we are at ninety, we're just under ninety-six percent. And, and we're a year out, okay? So, uh, the market shifted, my report was, uh, of April first of twenty-four, okay? Now, it, I think, I think that's right where it's supposed to be. Because the market hasn't gone down, I haven't seen an indication in sale yet. And, uh, I don't know, any other questions?
I was curious about the hex hangers. What drove the rate up and what brought it so far?
There were two, hey, there were,
I guess my, my main question is how was it valued differently from other properties? Because it's a thousand square foot structure.
Right.
And it's incredible.
Hundred grand, uh, there were two, for everyone's, for everyone's benefit. We have a, uh, we have airport hangers, buildings. And they typically, you know, long structures and then multiple, uh, people lease or own. Some are owned individually, broken out like a condo, as you will. And some are leased, the, the structures are leased out, uh, and some are leased out individually. So, it's, it's, it's Hexagon Hanger. That's, that, that's its descriptive name. And the four or five tenants actually became a club of some sort. And, uh, they, uh, they're now the Hexagon, uh, Hanger LLC. They were individually valued for years. They're requesting at some point that they, they be, they, they be, uh, combined together, which is not a change of value, but, uh, you know, if they want one bill as opposed to five, I could certainly have a discussion with them and bring up that information to the board if you wanted to do that. Building is building. But, uh, they leased from City of Keene. Now, City of Keene has other hangers that they don't lease or, or what have you. And they have two, they have two hangers that when I broke down the cost of this per square foot, it was, well, first, much less than the individual values from last year on the rebound. But I have to keep that in mind, that cost per square foot, which is around twenty-five, about twenty-five, twenty-six dollars a square foot. They were citing around twenty in their, in their request. Last year, uh, they, the, of the five, there were three that were about fifty-eight and two of them were a hundred. The hundred was on me. There, the, uh, coding on costing the hanger out, I had updated the three and missed the two, so that was legit. And it, and it looked, it stood right out. I mean, why, why I didn't catch it, I, I don't know. I didn't catch it. Thus the process, right? There were sales of, of, of hangers, uh, that were, would have individually sailed to support that. But it's not in a lease scenario. These are, these sales are for folks that own it, not leasing from, uh, uh, from the City of Keene. A different situation. In keeping with what the other City of Keene hangers are, the total, just the total square footage, I had to, in my review, uh, look at it as if of those five individual abatements were wrong and look at the total square foot.
So, what, you're really wrong, like, they're, they're, are they doing the pad lease and then they own the structure?
No, that's, that's not the way it's explained in there.
So what? They're not leasing from the city, they own the unit?
They lease from the city.
So if they lease from the city, why are they paying the, the property tax? Because they're listed as the owner?
No, the City of Keene is listed as the owner on each individual. But the City of Keene comes and sets their lease based on what, uh, what they, the tax obligation is. Sure, right, the, uh, like any landlord would in a situation where the, uh, where the building, the value increases.
So, it, it says, now, you know,
Hexagonal, what, as the owner? As, uh, they filed the abatement, but it would be, they're allowed to. They are, they are the, in this situation, they are the, the LSE.
So why would the LSE be paying taxes?
That's between the city and the LSE in this arrangement. Their, their lease is predicated on the tax.
I want to see what we have as an owner.
So, several, one was Doug Green.
Doug Green, oh.
But, uh,
I guess one.
Or, or light, Pete Delaney. They, they weren't individually named, they filed as one.
As the Hexagon, whatever.
And then enlisted them all individual as independents. But the town has independent cards, each card has the City of Keene as the, the owner.
So, again, why?
Well, they should, by right, they should have, uh, authorization, if nothing else, a letter of authorization from the City of Keene, making them, designating them, uh, as, as authorized to act, you know, on, on their behalf. You know, getting, getting permission.
Prefer the city, but you're paying the tax based on the nineteen forty arrangement that they made, but.
I agree, I agree.
So, we'll figure it out.
But that is taxed.
How does, how does the value get driven down to twenty thousand per unit?
Uh, yeah, it's twenty, twenty, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four. And, uh, what I did was I looked at the other city, the, the two, two other city hangers. And those were pricing out about twenty-six. And those hangers are, uh, in late eighties, ninety, built. There's depreciate, more depreciation on the, on the hex for age and the condition as well. A lack of, you know, of, of poor floor and things like that. It's, uh, it's an older, less, uh, lower quality and, uh, I, after considering for depreciation, twenty-six, uh, dollars a square foot was now down around twenty-three.
It's only by the City of Keene.
Okay. So, so that's something we just need to have a better understanding, like, who don't understand why they're paying the tax?
I don't like, I don't like rushing through that one, I'll be honest with you. And that's another thing I'd like to, just to, uh, discuss briefly. And, uh, hey, for the taxpayers of Swansea, this is a situation where, uh, not to say it's a, it's a pushy situation, but, uh, you know, they say the squeaky wheel gets the grease, but not always. And, and, and these are situations where, uh, the squeaky wheels may, maybe need to be told to, uh, sit tight and we'll get back to you when the, you know, when we can. I'm sorry that, uh, you know, your, your, this, this, the City of Keene in this situ, your landlord, wants to, uh, wants to increase your, your obligation or whatever through this situation. But, uh, uh, it was a, it was a bit of a push on the, on this one. I would like more information.
Can they even apply for it?
Pardon?
If the owner has to apply for the abatement?
The owner should apply for the, yes. Or in the back, there's a spot where they can have their, uh, representative, if you will. Okay, now they skipped that. I know the parties and I don't know who they are, but that alone, uh, would slow the process down and stall it until things have gone properly. The hangers, I've, I've had conversations, uh, with people regarding, uh, you know, the values of these things. Mr. Hartwell just, just mentioned earlier, uh, you know, nineteen thirty, nineteen forty rates. Hangers, uh, new, new hanger values, brand new, are, uh, you know, upwards of, uh, you know, two hundred grand plus and up. Okay? Now, uh, this may be a situation where, uh, you know, we had, the, the cost of living hasn't caught up with the airport hangers in Swansea, uh, in the Dillon Hopkins. But, uh, you know, the individual owners, those who buy their units, the same will show us what they're paying is, it has gone up. At least doubled from nine, ten years ago when it came on the scene. And very few of them, uh, complained of, you know, that their assessment was too high. Because they, you know, they know what they paid for. And they probably, probably got a good deal too, but the sale price is what it was. And, uh, we really don't have a strong database on airport hanger sales and so forth as yet. They were, you know, but we're dealing in five year increments. So, you know, uh, five or ten, even ten years ago, uh, there was little to no data. And it's taken ten years to start, you know, accumulating some of the data. And it's been that kind of thing that, when I came on the scene and certainly before my watch, where people would, oh, just, you know, they would put a number on it. And that's not right. We know that. So, uh, I, I, I don't want to seem ultra conservative, but I also don't want to, uh, put the town in any kind of, uh, you know, uh, jeopardy where it's something, it's something that we can't defend either. I thought, uh, you know, given the nature of, uh, of, of the, uh, volume of, uh, of, uh, call, traffic going through, uh, through the town, that it might be in the best interest to look at the two, look at the Keene, the other, the other buildings that they own and, uh, and a portion on cost per square foot that would, would be equitable compared to the other two. Once again, this is a recommendation. And, uh, we may not always agree. So, uh, I think Bill might have a good point. This may be a situation tonight with those abatements. Right? The board is well within their rights to, uh, and we're gonna hold off on this one, on these. And we can inform the tax, uh, the taxpayer that we, uh, we would like more information or, uh, we would like the, uh, application properly, uh, properly signed. I mean, at least one of these, they're, they're, these are like attorneys and so, so forth. They, they should know better than anybody. Probably file something. Mr. Green's a attorney, I thought, for example.
He should know better.
How many do you have, five of these?
There's either five or six, yeah.
Well, they're five, because it's one hang and it's kind of been five. So it's really, it's, it's, it's one scenario. But technically, technically.
Believe it or it's wrong.
Oh, it's just getting good.
Pass this back.
I don't want to be here to write anything down.
Thanks for coming.
But, uh, I, uh, Mr. Hartwell here, you know, and, uh, the board's well within its rights to, uh, ask for more, uh, more information and, uh, and to slow me down on that one. And I would, I would appreciate it, actually. With the change in format here, the new, uh, the new members, uh, a new administrator, uh, I have been trying to accommodate the, uh, the town to kind of put the revow on for a rear mirror. It's not necessarily, I'm not saying I'm wrong, but you're wrong, thanks. But, uh, my methodology on that is, is, is very sound. But, uh, if you don't, uh, if you don't agree with my recommendation, that's why there's two lines on that, one's granted, one's denied. And a denial, actually, uh, it doesn't end their, doesn't end their, their throat of, uh, of appeal. It's just a, uh, locally, well, we, we disagree and, uh, blah, blah, blah. And, and then that offers the, uh, avenue of, of appeal to the, to a higher level, which also reopens the communication between the town and the, and the taxpayer or taxpayers in this case. I can also, uh, and have many times in my recommendation to say, I, I've recommended deny at this time.
I do agree with Jim, normally there's some denials that, that come through and this year there haven't been any.
Right.
Maybe it's just the wrong.
You know, when you have twenty-four, twenty-four plus or minus out of thirty-seven hundred, I don't think there are, the ones I've seen so far, they're not outrageous. They're, they're, they're not outrageous and they've been, uh, predominantly fiscal, uh, fiscal driven. There are some coming up yet that, uh, for example, there are three abatements involving different, mini store, sub-storage properties that, uh, they're going to be the last ones that, that I, uh, that I take the time to examine. I've just reached out to one of them today, uh, Mr. Beal. And I've asked him for additional income expense information and, uh, and appraisal with, uh, Piazma. And I'm going to do that with the other two as well. The, uh, the Hex, uh, Hexagon?
Yeah.
Now, I, I printed my recommendation so I could follow along with you folks, but I didn't print out the, uh, the original copy of the request. But I do, I do recall the request, it does it, I believe it does say, uh, lease, uh,
Yes.
And, and could you read that for me, Mr. DePresto? Oh, no, no, the original application.
Whatever.
We have, we have a copy here. I thought it did mention the, uh, you know, we have, with, with our lease agreement, but for some reason, the lease agreement wasn't with me.
Some of them came through as a complete, some of them come, come through with a summary. So, we, we've asked that we get the complete package.
Which would be the original, that's how I submit them. I submit the original, uh, a property card and a recommendation.
Some of these are a full packet, and that's what we'll be getting in the future.
Okay, good. So, we don't have the full look tonight for that. Can I, may I make a recommendation to the board?
Yeah.
May I, my recommendation on the, on the, uh, the five individual, five is one. My recommendation tonight, based on our conversation, is to, uh, don't deny tonight, uh, don't grant tonight. Please hold it off till our next, till, to your next meeting, and, and I, I will come in again. And let's pick that up and, and I'll bring you, I'll bring some more information from them regarding the lease and what, uh, what is, what is with the, uh, uh, why, the whys anymore, it's, uh, from, uh, the City of Keene to use the, the taxpayer and, uh, perhaps the, uh, the town, um, Alucamori. Are you, are you up to table yet?
Yeah.
She's getting her dinner on her way home.
Fantastic. Uh, uh, next week, perhaps, I can call your office, or, or a week of craft, whatever. What I would suggest is a letter crafted, uh, requesting, uh, the proper, uh, application, an addendum. Now, they did five, okay, and, and, uh, by rights, it could be denied, okay? There's, there's a, a reason for denying it, uh, but, uh...
We, we gotta wrap up, 'cause we've got some non-publics we have.
I'm sorry, okay.
Give a lot of information.
But if we just shove this tonight, it's gonna be good. And, and this is a ban, this is a bumper you, okay, because of the revaluation. Twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty, whatever they are, that's a bumper, uh, that's a bumper banner here for abatements. Historically, the town of Swansea, uh, well, before I came to the board, but, uh, in the last five, uh, ten years, I mean, we're, we're, we're looking at, uh, kind of, kind of biggie of eight to ten.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's, it's, uh, it's not crazy. So, don't, you know, don't be disheartened, you know, disheartened by the fact that there's, seems like there are a lot of them. You know, you did read, uh, thirty-seven hundred, uh, parcels, and, uh, twenty-four, twenty-six, that's a low, that's a low percentage. I'm sorry, so I don't carry that.
We, we appreciate the, the education.
Do you wanna go, the, the, you wanna go through them one at a time here?
No, we'll take them, we'll, we'll take them next week, but we, we've got them on, because we've got other...
Very good. I apologize.
For what?
For, for carrying on here.
Yeah, for providing education.
Hey, I know, I got the power now, but I agree enough.
And I, seriously, uh, to be, to be honest with you, uh, I, I know you don't talk that the board does not have conversations, uh, outside of the, discuss matters outside of this. But individually, if you have a question that's, doesn't, you know, that's, that you need to answer a basic, uh, question, don't hesitate, okay? I, I don't have a lot of answers, but, uh, if, I, I do know how to say, uh, I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I appreciate the time, I look forward to it. Yeah, welcome. Sorry, I'm sorry.
All right, we, I, I know this is just an, a consent agenda, but we, we need to, uh, just review the, uh, under new business, the request, uh, from the assessment coordinator that we sign an updated agreement with CAI Tech Technologies. And Michael, that's a group that does the GIS for us, for the town. And, well, our current contract calls for an annual update, so that means all the properties in town are updated at one time instead of ongoing. By agreeing to pay them an additional twenty-five hundred dollars a year or two hundred dollars a month, it allows the coordinator to update the, uh, the record on a monthly basis. So, she's already doing it in terms of submitting to the registry of deeds and reviewing all that. But it gives us an opportunity to have the maps upgraded and to have the input on, on a monthly basis. Is that all right?
Do you think so, I might want to send it?
Absolutely, because it, it allows us to keep our mapping system.
Makes sense.
And also the records, currently.
Yeah. Okay, do I motion for that?
I make a motion that we authorize CAI Technologies for a monthly update instead of annual to our access via, via S system that costs not to exceed twenty-five hundred a year.
Second.
Any further discussion? On the paper?
Aye.
Let's make another, another beneficiary. Okay, so we, uh, we were, we were sought out by a, a group that is lobbying the State House with regard to school funding fairness, and in your packet, it is, at the end of the packet, is a, is a letter, is an email, as well as all of the other municipal officials throughout the state that have, that have signed. One, one of your, uh, people signed. Were you aware of the letter? No. So, I think that it's, it's something that we, I don't see how we lose by, by signing it. There, there's so much contention with regard to taxes and, and downshifty from the state, that this is an effort on the part of this group to encourage the state to stop the downshifty and increase, increase funding. I don't see how we lose on that. And it's, and it's individual, so we can sign collectively, we can go, go in the town hall tomorrow and, and sign that, or go in individually.
Yeah, as ranch.
It's just consensus, it's not...
Got it.
All right.
So, we would have to be, we are all signed together?
We can or we can't. We can sign individually or collectively. So, we're, we're by consens, consensus.
We can send a board directly to Swansea?
Uh, selectmen, but, but with the individuals.
Okay.
He gets his boards next time, he serves on so many. Okay, all right, so we'll make sure we let that printed up at some point tomorrow. Response to the public input card, we, we wanted to talk about goals tonight. You were away for a few days taking care of personal matters.
I heard.
About this.
Uh, do you want me to talk about goals?
Yeah, or put it off a week, would you?
I don't know, okay, if I've got other goals, if you want. You guys' goals, if you wanna speak about it.
Well, I mean, one of the goals, obviously, we gotta work on the water system, I know it's still three years out. Obviously, we gotta start now. We wanna set up that committee for governance, I agree with that, we need to, and I talked to Cheryl, the area, so I can mind development, she definitely wants to be on that, so. To an end, we definitely need to work on it.
The other two for me were welcoming this young lady into our fold and, and supporting her as, as best we can. Obviously, continuing to work on the fire station and, and taking aggressive, unaggressive, take a strong approach to encourage completion sooner rather than, rather than later. And then just bravely monitoring our, our other processes. Yeah, and that's all I'm doing. I think i- in addition, we, we wanna continue to work with Adam, who's, who's looking into how we can better make this space more functional and user-friendly.
Phil, sorry, can you, there's, I mean, Adam on the plane.
Adam, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Adam Mollburn's on his own accord, not, not to correct you.
I just, I never know which Adam you're, you're learning to, so...
Good point. And then, of course, we have the Mark Spiller request to, to not raise taxes, but replace the chairs.
He did, I took care of that.
You took care of what?
Replacing his chair.
Oh, but that didn't help Michael.
Spend a day if you can go over to him.
Who cares about the old jar yet?
Uh, I had a meeting the other day, I went to the board meeting for the economic development, and they wanted me to bring that to the board, that they would like to see, like, code enforcement, fire department, they go to do inspections on properties to do it together, so there's not a delay, and these people get approval quicker, they feel that they're there together, they'll maybe check each other's works if one of them misses the other, so they wanted me to bring that forward. And the only other thing I wanted to bring forward is, I think we should have our select board meetings, like, earlier in the afternoon. Almost eight o'clock now, and it's not even so much that, but we have all these people that come in that work for the town, they probably don't wanna be here till eight o'clock at night either, and I think it would be beneficial. It's video, we know Mike's gonna come, we got this.
So, we're gonna give you guys five.
I appreciate it, so, so that would be my recommendation, like, three o'clock in the afternoon instead of five-thirty in the afternoon. Is that like it?
Hope we can redo that. Michael, anything else?
Not about to wait, you guys got those committees together, 'cause I will volunteer for one or the other.
Yeah, we wanted to wait till Laurie was in place.
Well, that makes sense.
So she could join with us in this, because there's so many projects that are going on now, that she's gonna have to play catch-up on, that, that at least this would give her an opportunity to participate.
The other thing I wanted to mention here too, the, the impact fees we're talking about, there's some resistance on the board, one is, they're afraid they're gonna put too much additional work on the staff. I'm the vice commissioner, but that's not our place. We're supposed to look at zoning and see what makes sense for the town and propose zoning amendments. And if it puts additional, uh, work on the staff, then that's up to the select board and the administrator to work that out. That's my opinion.
It seems like impact fees, we, we could do some research on to, to develop a, a schedule that would be...
I'm good at handwork, and I found also on it, uh, the nineteen ninety-nine, I just thought the newer, that I gave to Adam.
Well, once we, once we have a policy in place, and once you all create whatever, whatever, you know, which, which you assess, whatever that impact fee is...
Yeah, we have to make a matrix of what we wanna assess and, and all that, this, this is a big step to it. But it has to be done by the planning board as far as, well, actually, the select board could do it too. 'Cause the select board can do zoning. But we, to this, Swansea, of course, left it off to the planning. The other thing I wanted to mention even, uh...
So, on that topic, we, if we can, if we can receive something from a planning board, then, then the next step, it's really not any significant impact on staff once the planning board has determined what they're gonna do, because it's just a part of the permitting process.
Right.
So, when someone, when, when they pull a building permit, they pay their impact fee, or they pay a portion of it in the balance when they get their CL, so, it would just seem to me it would be...
Right, it's not the other.
Put together, and that's just handling...
But towns do have to be set up for it.
Yeah, because you're gonna, you know, the funds involve them in, right? 'Cause all the funds are gonna be different.
Right, and, and it's, it's up to the town, the planning board, the select board together, to say, oh, where do we want to put it back, these, you don't have to do them on everything, uh, you could do them on commercial mostly, uh, but I clearly should do some on the, uh, the homes, the, the center homes, only in fact, they're gonna have a big impact on the schools. We wanna keep it affordable, so a guy's building a new home, uh, that it doesn't keep him from building his home, not to start...
Yeah, 'cause it's gonna be different rates for different projects.
Different races, different places, exactly.
I mean, some of them are gonna be less impact, some of them are gonna be more impact.
Exactly.
You do a business, if children, if one is...
Right, yeah, the other thing...
Really, that's where the difficult part is, to figure all those, those fees out, like, what are they? So, like, you're gonna be able to look it up, okay, oh, they're gonna put in this, so this is, this is the rate that we're gonna charge an impact fee, am I correct?
That's correct, but there has to be a zoning amendment itself.
Yeah. There's a lot of work to do.
It's a long road to do, yes. And, you know, the other thing was, uh, was there...
We're blaming on Laurie, she is in here, we could bring her in, once she gets here. We blame everybody but her.
Well, I plan on working with her on it too, because I'm the one that's actually pushing, pushing us on the board. I have that for, if you guys know what's that. So, yeah, I'll be working with Laurie on it.
I heard, the first day became selectmen.
Anything else, Michael?
Well, they, they also wanted to, as Scott mentioned about trying to do some type of, if we'd had fees back, how much money would we have collected up for the last five years?
What about a fire truck?
I tried to make fire truck, firehouse, the school that we're building now, that would have helped with that, 'cause the Swansea portion of the school, anything to do with schools, we could put that in there too. They need new laptops or whatever. Swansea's portion, if you pay out of that, that's less burden on the taxpayers. And that's what we're trying to sell, this is a less burden on the taxpayers and having a shared, uh, cost with people that are building it out.
What towns are serious of impact fees, do you have a lot of towns?
Uh, not a lot of towns, uh, Wyndham has it, where Microsoft's...
Can you have an impact fee?
Uh, no, but they have...
They do, they put it on market basket.
The planning board, you know, doesn't, can't, already, without impact fees in place, can require somebody, if they see, like, Saturday over, we can finally talk to the developers, give us some money for it, we could have demanded it, we could have made it.
Haven't they been on market basket? Market basket.
Market basket?
Keen, Keen, well, actually, we got funds as well for Ashell Road, but Keen, uh, impact fee, regional impact. And part of the market basket's land is in Keen's.
And they know that. You actually, you think about people with this section.
Traditionally, what we've done is, uh, made agreements with these builders.
What's that?
Traditionally, what the, the planning board's done is made agreements with different contractors, and I come in, we see, okay, we need to do this, we've asked agreements from them. But the impact fees that share that burden across the, of the road, uh, we wouldn't put in a new water system here in West Swansea if we can't. Our impact needs to help with that, infrastructure.
You're preaching to the choir now.
Oh, I know, I know, I'm gonna keep preaching to the planning board every week too, it's a big challenge.
Anybody, anybody else have any? All right, you have non-publics, Megan? We under ninety-one A.
A.
All right.
Make a motion on the non-public, ninety-one A.
Second.
Rocco, DeBessa?
I love her.
Here. Thank you, Michael.